Okay, we're good.
All right. Give me a second here. So we're going to begin tonight with the public hearing for ordinance O dash 20 dash six, which is an ordinance of the town council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the general fund for the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 20 to June 30 of 21 and setting municipal tax rates. Is there anybody on this virtual meeting that has a comment? Any public comment on this?
Let me make sure I'm muted, everyone.
Okay. Hearing none. Public hearing on ordinance O dash 20 dash seven, an ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2020 to June 30 of 21. Before I ask for any comment, I think somebody's got something going on in the background there in their home. I guess it stopped, thank you. Before I ask for any... All right, we're gonna have to figure this out, guys. Any idea what's going on? Okay, I hear silence. Maybe it's made in the audio. Before I ask for public comment, I'm gonna tell everybody that when the time comes in section seven, I'll be asking the council to table this until May the 21st, so the town can work out some issues that we have with our partners. And then also be able to discuss this amongst ourselves at the May 11th town council work session meeting. But well, and by the time comes for me to field a a motion and a second, we can have any discussion at that point. So is there any public comment on this ordinance? Given what I said. Hearing none. Thank you. We'll move to ordinance O dash 20 dash eight, an ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the annual budget for the mitigation fund for the fiscal year July 1 of 20 to June 30 of 21. Is there anybody on this call from the public that has a comment they would wanna make? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearings?
Need to close.
All in favor?
Second.
Okay, we have till seven o'clock and reminds me of a housekeeping measure that I have, which is basically last meeting, we, what we did with the council was we asked for a lot of, you know, motions that are perfunctory. We asked that the vice president, you know, make the motion, and then Derek on the other end of the dais as we normally have it, would make the second. If Charlie's on the call, I was gonna ask this meeting for Charlie to make the motion and for Keith to make the second. But if Charlie isn't on the call...
I am here.
Okay, so Charlie, will have you make the motion and then we'll ask Keith to second it. It helps things go smoothly and it helps Sharon, you know, recording who made the motion and second. As the council knows, when I, when we field the discussion, I I usually start with Valerie and work my way around or I alternator start with Derek and work my way around that way. I'll continue to do that as you are normally seated on the dais. So having said that, we still gotta wait till seven o'clock. Just five minutes away. Okay.
Holly?
Yeah.
Is Dale on the call?
Yeah.
Okay.
Marilyn and John Castro are as well, and Connie.
Hey Sharon.
Lieutenant Nelson. And Sergeant Phelps.
Yes.
If you tilt your screen a little bit this way, we'll be able to see all of you.
I know.
Is that necessary?
No, no, that's your call, quite frankly. Thank you. Told you I missed you.
You know, I've always, and I spend a good part of my day in conference call meetings like this. And now that we've got people at home or in other locations, I'm always curious if someone wants to share something in their home, like a picture or a background or something.
Well, Keith has that little background thing going on, don't you Keith?
What do you gotta, we'd have to scroll over to Keith.
Yeah, he's, he's had that, he had that last meeting. I think at some point in time, he went out and bought one of them things.
Oh, that little screen.
So he doesn't have to clean up his house. I think that's what's going on there.
And Valerie, you were just, what were you doing? You were, you were trying to get out the window for a shot of the bay? That's nice, look at that.
Yeah, that's my third floor. At the desk.
Nice.
One thing that happens to me quite regularly is my, one of my cats is a camera. I likes to, likes to get him back and do a camera bomb, so that could happen during the meeting.
All right, okay.
Can you guys hear me? This is Derek.
Yep.
We can hear you Derek.
All right, good. I'm just messing around here, my system here. The audio's coming through the computer, but the speaker on my phone is what I'm talking into, so it's a little odd. But I'll make it work. Thanks.
Looks like I see Ronnie there. Hey Ronnie.
Hey, what's going on there? How are you, sir?
Good buddy.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, here you see it, the whole bit. Actually, you're kinda tall, you're getting bumped out by Charlie. There you go.
Just get this thing adjusted here.
I see your neck is fine.
All right, we're trying to get it adjusted before everything gets started here.
All right.
How's everybody making out?
Best we can, brother. Best we can.
I hear you. Fit a little better now?
Yeah, I was only kidding. I didn't care if I didn't see you or not. Hey John, I see you now. How you doing buddy?
I'm pretty good.
Nice.
Still trying to get my screen right, but...
No, it looks good. Looks good.
Well, I'm trying to split it to have the agenda on one side and the camera on the other side, but...
I'm trying to do the same thing. I cannot see four people at a time, but I can hear everybody.
All right, I'm gonna start, so...
All righty.
Okay, so we'll begin the April 16th town council meeting. Let the record read that the entire council and mayor are present. Before I move on, I wanna introduce both Todd Pounds and Wayne Newton to our meeting, our, our new attorney and town engineer. Welcome guys. Thanks for calling in.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
At this time, we'll, we'll do a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
Black.
America. To the Republic of the Public, for which it stands.
Stands.
One nation, under God.
Invisible. With liberty, justice for all.
All righty, thanks very much. At this time, if you will, everybody, I'd like to take a a moment of silence for retired Prince George's County police officer and Huntington resident Jerry Manley, who is the sole member of, sole person from Calver County who suffered a fatality from, from COVID-19, so for Mr. Manley. Thank you very much. Everybody described him as being the greatest guy in the world, so hell of a loss. Approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
No moved.
Keith? Are you there Keith? I guess not. Will anybody make a second now? We got Charlie made a motion. Is there a second from, from the field?
I can.
All right, just take anybody, Sharon. Okay, at this time, is there any public comment on any item that is on the agenda? Hearing none. I'll move on to approval of the minutes of the March 19th town council.
Move to approve?
Second.
Second by Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
And the eyes...
Aye.
And the eyes have it. Approval of the minutes of the April 6th work session.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the eyes have it. At this time, we'll, the town administrators report. Holly, is there anything of special significance you wanna share with the, with the audience?
Holly, you're on mute.
We can wait.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So the only notice that I wanted to give is that the town is doing a really great job on the census self-response. If you can see my screen, we are now at 59.1%. We're doing, we're doing great, higher than the Maryland self-response rate, currently higher than the county's self-response rate, so everyone can keep up the great work and it, it will pay off in the end, so thank you.
Very good. Anybody have any questions of the town administrator for her report?
Yeah, I do. This is Derek.
Yes, sir.
And I know it's in one of the later reports as well, but Holly, do you know if the state is still processing the safe route to school? You know, for the rest of it, are they still working that or is that on pause?
They are still working that. So we had sent back some clarifications that were requested. However, we haven't heard back since then, so I know their operations has changed drastically. And I will follow up with them again to see if we can get an answer.
All right, thank you.
Very good. As part of the, the package with the town administrator, you'll see, you have received the, the public works report, the, the treatment plant report and the water park report. So in advance, does anybody have any, you've read Jay's report, do we have any questions for Jay of the council?
Request.
Sir.
Yeah, respectfully request a copy of the topography study when it's completed, just of interest.
You're speaking of Callum's Field, Greg?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Any other questions of Jay? If not, we'll move on to John Castro. You've read the, the treatment report. Any questions of Mr. Castro? Hearing none, we'll move on to the water parks report. I don't know if Marilyn's on the call or not, but if not, Holly can take any questions that you may have later. You can just email her.
I'm here.
She's on.
Okay, do anybody have any questions of Marilyn's report? Hearing none. We don't have a treasurer's report. He's been busy working budget. The town engineers report. We've, we've read the town engineers report. Do we have any questions of Wayne? Hearing none, the deputies report.
Hey, I have a question on these.
You have a question for Wayne?
Yes, if I may.
Yes, please do.
It was on page three. On page three, we're gonna be going over the limits of the town maintenance responsibility of the property. Did this have anything to do with the formative that we assigned? The town would not have a property.
Valerie, you're really breaking up.
I couldn't hear a word you said, Valerie.
Right.
Try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You're like that commercial, can you hear me now?
Yes, I hear you now.
Okay. Last section. Rod and reel.
Okay.
Yes.
It talks about the limits of town maintenance responsibility of the constructed facility. Would this also include the stormwater management agreement that was signed? And regarding limits to the town's responsibility for that stormwater management.
It, it does tie into that agreement which we executed. This exercises more for the identification of water lines, sewer lines and storm drain lines than it is that stormwater facility. The stormwater facility agreement which we executed clearly says that that's the responsibility of the rod and reel club, that we're not responsible for. But we are outlining the remainder of the public utilities that are in Mears Avenue there to determine which is, which utilities that the town will be responsible for and which ones will be private. That's what it's, that's what it's about.
And that happens, will there be anything like a written report coming out of that that can be shared with town council?
Yes, there'll actually be a map, which we'll figure out how we get to you. My office is generating it now and I'll have it ready for the next meeting.
That is really good news, because I've always had concerns with that agreement, you know, about who has maintenance responsibility, not a property owner, both now and during the building phase. I've always had concerns about that, so it's nice to hear that they're very happy with laying out these lines. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you Valerie. Any other questions of Wayne? Hearing none. That'll take us to the deputies report. We've, we've read the lieutenant's report. Do we have any questions of the lieutenant?
Question.
Please.
Ronnie, I was looking at the report and two items jumped out at me. One was the disorder, and this is just for Chesapeake Beach, the disorderly line and the patrol check line. In March, the number of calls on both of those items were basically half of what we have seen for the entire year, the other two months included. Any comments or ideas what's going on there?
Which, which two lines are you speaking of, Mr. George?
Disorderly, which in March had 12, 22 for the year, and patrol check had 212 in one March, in one month of March versus 447 year to date.
So are you speaking of the, the amount that the patrol checks had went up?
Yes.
So what happened is the town closed down and we started taking precautions for the COVID-19 and the coronavirus, like one and the same. We virtually eliminated traffic stops unless they're, they're a hazard to the public. So our patrol checks have picked up immensely as we're patrolling neighborhoods, shopping centers and things like that. There's virtually no traffic out in public, so, so they went up, you know, we refocused our patrol and the way we're patrolling the beaches. And one of those ways is proactive and going into the neighborhoods and patrolling those and recalling them out. They, they went up as the calls for service are non-existent for rod and reel avenues, the shopping centers and things like that. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And how about the disorderly? There were 12 in March versus 22 year to date.
Um, I, I would have to say without looking at that, I, I don't have a copy of the report here in front of me, sir, but I would say that a lot of that is probably to do with, with Fred Donahue. He, he gets in and out, and when he's out, they go up dramatically when he, when he's locked up. They go down dramatically, so I'm not saying absolutely that's the reason, but I would say that's...
Can I, they've also listed complaints of citizens breaking the governor's order as disorderlies also.
Ah, I understand. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, I forgot about that, Tom. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Tom. Any other questions from council?
Question.
Yes, sir.
If Ronnie or Sergeant Phelps could comment briefly on the, I believe there were some arrests made related to some car thefts and some burglary of vehicles in Richfield Station?
Yes, sir Greg. They had, they had numerous, a pretty night, a one night spree where two automobiles were stolen there and several cars were broken into. And if you noticed the theft from autos and stuff there, I think we had 18 calls for service the day after that. Actually deputies got in chase, in a chase with the suspects the very night that that was occurring. A citizen called it in, they encountered a car and they ended up chasing one of the cars out, which hadn't been reported stolen at the time the chase began and a supervisor called it off because of bad weather that night. But Detective Crest paired up with some of the detectives down in Prince Frederick and they did an outstanding job. They went down to some of the metro stations downtown and went to the neighborhoods where one of the cars was recovered. Spoke with the security guard down there, they were able to identify suspects and there has been arrests made. There were juveniles out of, out of Washington DC. And I'm sure that was an isolated incident, but there was some good detective work in that and good police work and it was closed by an arrest.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, indeed. Any other questions of Ronnie or Tom? Thank you gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, as always, if we have any, any questions, field them to Larry and he'll he'll, he'll respond, right Larry?
Yes, sir.
Okey doke. Mayor's report. I thought, given where we are right now, that I would, would try to focus if I can on some good news. So in the last week, we received some good news from the Calver County Board of Commissioners. They did approve the tax differential for the town for fiscal year 21, so that's, that's great. Want to thank, you know, Dale and Holly for putting together a package to make it sure that they did make that approval. We'll receive the final approval, all the i's dotted and t's crossed for, for Callum's Field being deeded over to the town. So we, we do own Callum's Field now. I received good news from the state. Last night I had a conversation with Senator Miller, who was giving me the progress of a grant he's working on for the town. So that was great to hear from, from Senator Miller. And in the continued spirit of good news, for the public's sake, I'm going to kinda let the, the cat out of the bag a little bit and, because in a few, a few minutes, I anticipate that the town council is going to pass a tax rate decrease, which would be the fourth year in a row. So I guess what I'm trying to say, the purpose of this whole thing is that in these troubled times, we want to make it clear that the public knows that, that your town, your county and your state representatives are still working for you and still providing services for you. So I thought we had, in spite of all this, we've had some, some good news from our colleagues. I wanna take the time to, give me a second if you will. I want to take the time to, to thank the citizens for continuing to be safe by social distancing, washing your hands and wearing masks where that's appropriate. Because one of the most important things that we, that we all need to take with us is how you will feel in two weeks is determined by what safety measures you take today and tomorrow. It's that simple. It's, it's a, it's a minimum 14 day thing, which we're all pretty much aware of, but we need to be, you know, cognizant that if we want to be at a good place in two weeks, we have to be good now. So thank you and, and lastly, and probably most importantly, I really want to take the time to thank the, the town staff, the entire, Holly, Jay, John, who are on the call. I mean, I think Connie's on the call, Marilyn's on the call, if I'm missing anybody, Dale's on the call, but just the entire staff for what they're doing to support this administration as we're going through this. And having said that, I also want to thank the town council for supporting the administration when they're asked, asked to do so as well. So that's, that's my mayor's report. So we will move on to...
Mayor, question.
Mayor, question.
You have a question on what your topic, so go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to check to see if there is a report on code enforcement.
Yeah, I was gonna get to that.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, the, I was supposed to include that when I mentioned what was part of Holly's package and I, I failed to. So do we have any questions of Connie? Hearing none, I'll move on to Roman numeral seven and thank her. And I told those guys you would catch me. I told them. Okay, vote on ordinance O dash 20 dash six. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the general fund for the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 20 to June 30 of 21 and setting municipal tax rates. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second, if you can hear me.
I can hear you.
Excellent. I've spoken about four or five times and not gotten through, but anyway, thank you.
And now you're speaking real loud.
Wonderful.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and the eyes have it, and as I said, you know, before, to be clear, this, this is the, the first time, most likely in the history of the town of Chesapeake Beach, certainly in the 30 years I've been here, that a town council has decreased the tax rate for the citizens four years in a row. So I applaud you. A great applause. I really do applaud the council on that, because that is called giving back to your, your people while you're still maintaining and increasing services. So thank you very much. Next, we have vote on ordinance O dash 20 dash seven. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2020 to June 30 of, of 21. And as I said before, I'll, I'll be asking for a motion to table this until the May 21st town council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the May meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, good job Holly in prepping the council. Next, we have a vote on ordinance O dash 20 dash eight. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the mitigation fund for fiscal year July 1 of 20 to June 30 of 21. There a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the eyes have it. Very well. Next, I'm going to introduce ordinance O dash 20 dash nine. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the annual budget for the water park for fiscal year July 1 of 20 to June 30 of 21. I'm going to set the public hearing for 6:55 PM on May the 21st. Next, introduce ordinance O dash 20 dash 10. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the utility fund for the fiscal year July 1/20 to June 30 of 21 and setting rates, charges and fees related to water and storage. and setting rates, charges, and fees related to water and sewer service by the town. I'll set this public hearing for 6:57 PM on May 21st. Thank you. Section 8. Planning and zoning and Board of Appeals, no hearings heard, obviously. John Bacon with the C-Box, he says he can't wait till he sees us. Economic development, Larry, do you have anything for us?
Yes, several things, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Wanted to just share, there's been, from an economic development point of view, some conflicting information coming out on various things having to do with this virus that's going around. Just wanted to clarify some things. First of all, any residents, businesses, whatever, are encouraged to go check our town website. We have a specific tab on the website for the COVID-19 information. There is another website on the county, www-calvertcountymd.gov/coronavirus. And the county Department of Economic Development has organized a number of meetings to discuss getting some financial assistance to our businesses in town. One of those meetings included Senator Ben Cardin and Senator Chris Van Hollen. There's another website for local businesses. It's called the Maryland Business Relief Wizard. The site is https://reliefwizard.net. It will provide assistance in researching state and federal assistance programs. So I encourage everyone to go do that. One other thing I just wanted to clarify, and I know the mayor has posted some things on this on our town website, there's been some, I'll say confusing information coming out from the county on precautions that people should be taking going into various businesses. Just to clarify, right now, there is no requirement for residents to shop only on certain days. While it's encouraged, it is not a requirement. I do think it's important to note, though, that starting Saturday, it is a requirement in the state of Maryland that people be wearing face masks when they go into business establishments. So just keep that in mind. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm done.
Yeah, and I'm going to just touch on that final point, because I've been in contact with the elected representatives at the county. To be clear, it was the Health Department that recommended a policy where you go by certain days of the week. The county commissioners did not recommend that, and from what I understand, they don't even support it. So that's why they came out and, you know, and made a correction on that. So yes, thank you, Larry, and that was just, you know, and, you know, to try to get Channel 7, 4, and 9 to pick up on that. That took a while, but thank you very much, Larry. Twin Beaches opioid abuse awareness. Keith, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, just a little bit. Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to remind folks that there are people still out there struggling with opioid addiction. There have been 17 non-fatal overdoses in the county since January and four fatal overdoses since January. And I just wanted to remind everyone that the Calvert County Behavioral Health Department, they have their recovery rapid response program. And so, you know, if you or someone you know is struggling with opioid addiction and wants to stop using them, please call the recovery rapid response team And that's any day from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. They can help streamline access to recovery services and provide urgent same-day opiate treatment through their mobile crisis team. They also provide telehealth service, and that's for anyone who has an iPhone, Android, or computer equipped with a webcam. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Keith. Welcome, community advisory group. Councilman Fabry?
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So we had a telephone meeting, Holly and I, with our planning firm last week. Just to get an update on where they were, we also discussed having a meeting with our work group with the planning firm pretty soon. So we're going to be planning for that shortly. I should have an update next month. And also, we briefly discussed how we can solicit public input to the plans. And so we discussed some web-based type messaging and surveys and other media-based ways to reach the public and gain their input. So once that firms up, we'll have more information to share on that. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We have no unfinished business, but in terms of new business, I have a couple items before we begin with number one. First, I want to say that, once again, just, you know, picking things up with, you know, good news, if you will. Yesterday was Larry's birthday. I want to wish Larry a happy birthday, April the 15th there, same day as my son, Patrick.
Thank you.
And...
Larry just turned 21. And as soon as the restrictions are lifted, we're going to take him out. I'm going to have that first beer.
Yeah. Pinocchio will be your nickname. Okay, and, you know, my wife's birthday is Saturday, April the 18th, but she shares the same birthday as the town administrator, Holly Wall. So happy birthday, Holly.
Happy birthday, Holly.
Happy birthday.
Cheers to all. Happy birthday, Judy.
Holly's a couple days younger than Larry, but, you know, but who's counting, right?
I am.
Okay, new business. Council to approve the purchase of a Bobcat Skid loader from Metro Bobcat in the amount of $43,544.34. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the purchase?
Second.
Any questions of Jay? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Council to award a three-year contract with one one-year option to renew to Barbara Kane Thornton for audit services in the annual amount of $23,003,004 for a single audit. Motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Council to award a contract for rental inspections to American Property Consultant Incorporated for one year with two one-year options to renew.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, we have public comment. I believe Sharon has one written public comment to read in for the record, if you will, Sharon.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, just tell who it's from and what the comment is.
Okay, it's from Lee Osberry of the 2020 census. He reports that field data activities were suspended in March, and steps are being taken to reactivate field offices beginning June 1st. Calvert County remains in the top 10 for the state with, as Holly said tonight, a 59.1% response rate. He thanks those that have completed their census and encourages those that haven't to either go online or by phone or mail in their phone. And as field operations resume, they will continue to follow federal, state, and local guidelines to keep everyone safe. And many thanks to the mayor, council, and everyone's support for the census.
Very good. Thank you, Sharon. Is there any other public comment at this time?
Mayor? Mayor, it's Connie. Can you hear me?
I hear you.
I just, it's not really public comment, but I don't know, not a good place to put it. I just want to thank everyone for their kind thoughts and prayers and the beautiful flowers when I lost my mother a few weeks ago.
Yeah, and I apologize for not having a moment of silence for your mom. And I think this is an appropriate time to do that. So if the council will... Thank you, council. Connie, I read your mother's obituary. She was certainly everything that you cracked her up to be.
Yes, she was. She loved those Cardinals.
Yeah, I feel like I know a lot about you more now than I did before. So you have my, you know, your deepest sympathy in your loss, because I think it's probably safe to say, and in many conversations I've had with you over the last, you know, 20 years, more than half of them, you brought your mom up in a conversation. So that says a lot for the love you had for your mother.
Thank you.
I do understand, and thanks for bringing that up. Okay, so council lightning round. We'll begin with the vice president.
Yeah, once again, congratulations.
You're breaking up.
They've been asking for a holiday extension. Next, if you're interested, our high school seniors are under a lot of stress right now. And you can actually adopt a senior if you want from Northern High School. Just go on Facebook or on their website and you can get the details. And finally, just please take some proper precautions. Care of yourself, those you love and those who are in the community. And be hopeful.
Thank you. Very good. Charlie?
Yeah, I have a couple things I'd like to share. The standing on some of the messages that we put together, that the town put together for townsfolk and everyone, really. Checking in on your neighbor is something that is, I think, very important right now. And I had an interesting anecdote I wanted to share that was sort of rewarding. A neighbor of mine was at the post office, or the post box here in our development, and I was up on my stairs. I was going to come down to go to the post box myself. And she was there, and I struck up a conversation, asked her how she was doing and did she need anything. And she was very upbeat, and she said, no, I don't need anything, but I need to dash back inside and so on. And lo and behold, about 10 minutes later, we were still talking. And I thought, well, maybe she didn't need anything, but it was certainly a nice opportunity to take 10 minutes and talk from a distance. And I just think it's so important. You talk to someone and you may, you know, they may not need anything consciously, but a 10-minute conversation could be the difference between someone going home happy and not. So I just share that little anecdote with everyone. The second thing I wanted to say is, this week, I attended virtually a meeting of the library committee. They are working really hard to get community feedback. And there are two events that are coming up. They're virtual events that are on April 22nd. One is at 2:00 PM, and one is at 7:00 PM. If you're interested in attending, you can find information on the town website and also the Calvert County Library site. On the town's website, if you go to the link that says government, and then choose the option for town meetings and events, and at the bottom, there's a link to the Zoom sessions. If you go to the Calvert County Library site and go to events, you can scroll down to April 22nd, and you'll see links for both events. I strongly encourage you, if you have the time or the interest to get involved, provide some feedback. They're going to do an exercise that they did face-to-face with a number of us up at North Beach Town Hall. It's a really well-run exercise. They provide examples of various library features, and it's really firsthand input. And I get the sense that they're taking the input very seriously, and it's going to make a difference in the library that we get as a community. So I encourage you to check that out. Thank you for indulging me and stay full.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Two things. One is, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone in town for the congratulations I got on finally passing this climate change professional class. It was quite an ordeal, but thank you, everyone, for the congratulations. Thank you for the birthday wishes. And then finally, I just wanted to encourage everyone to continue to support our local businesses as much as possible. Stay safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Mr. Morris?
Yeah, good evening, Chesapeake Beach. We're doing a good job with the census, as Holly had mentioned. Those of you that haven't completed the census, please do it. Strongly encourage. It's really easy to do. I was really surprised how easy it was to do. They don't ask that many questions, and me and my wife, we did it together in about five minutes. And if you have done it, please spread the word. We want to be fully represented, fully represented by all residents. And then I need to take the time again to, please stay safe. Please follow state and local guidelines regarding the COVID-19 the best that you can. We're all in this together. We're depending on one another to get out from under the shadow as soon as we can. I know the summer's coming. And we're all optimistic that things are going to loosen up a little or more by then. We don't really know. And I know I said this during the work session, but again, these next two weeks are really important for that, and they're critical. And if people, if there's too many people not following guidelines and trying to be safe, things are going to tighten up more. And I know we don't want that, so please work together. And remember, that many of our residents, our colleagues, our neighbors, their family, they're suffering from various problems associated with this COVID-19. So please have patience and echo sentiments from Councilman Fink. A kind word is like a spring day. So everybody, please be safe and... Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Keith?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to remind everyone to stay safe, and I hope you are staying well and sane. And with that, I'll go.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fabry?
All right, well, I want to thank Dale and Holly and all the managers for all the effort they've done to put these budgets together. Very well done again this year, and I'm confident I'll be saying the same message next month when we do the other ones. And also, I just want to reiterate what's been said before. Of course, we're still in this. Social distancing is key. But I think most importantly, you know, whether it happens before we meet again next month or after, you know, as we start moving back towards a normal, you know, environment, we need to be smart, and we need to follow recommendations, just like Greg said. We need to follow those and, you know, not just open the floodgates and go back to what it was like, you know, a few months ago. We're going to have to ease back into this, and I just hope everyone realizes that and does it and protects themselves and their families when doing it. Look forward to seeing everyone back in Town Hall real soon.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Be safe, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.